Good evening, everyone, to this regular meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education for Thursday, March 18th, 2021. This meeting is a virtual meeting via Zoom technology. The first agenda item is a silent prayer, and hopefully to lead us in, Dr. Ruffin, do you have any one that you want to recognize during this portion?
I do, Commissioner, thank you.
Yep.
During our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Gloria DeVito, former Board of Education member many years ago, passed away on February 13th. Michael Canby, foreman for the Connecticut Masons, working on the Wendell Cross Project, passed away on February 18th. Nicholas Pericini, former elementary school teacher, passed away on February 18th. Raymond Immons, retired technical education teacher at Crosby High School for 35 years, passed away on February 20th. John Cronin Jr., bus driver for Durham Services for 13 years, passed away on February 24th. Diane McManus, retired school secretary at Wallace Middle School for 20 years, passed away on March 13th. Let us remember and recognize the service, dedication, and passion both to the students of Waterbury Public Schools and those they cared for this evening.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and because he's got the New York Yankees background there, I would like Commissioner Tom Van Stone to lead us into our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you, sir.
Will do. Thank you for the privilege. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Our next agenda item is the infamous roll call, and Margaret Cherabini, you're on.
Commissioner Brown. Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Nardozzi.
Here.
Commissioner Orso.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Present.
President Pagano.
I am present also.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Margaret.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is number four, Communications. Commissioner Sweeney, can you tee us up?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
May I have a second? Thank you. Discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item, there is no public address to the board tonight because there are no speakers on the tab. So we now move on to item number six, Superintendent's announcements. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. We start off with this very special presentation in honor of all of you Commissioners for your tireless efforts and your service. Well, can we get some volume here?
Dear supervisor, fine arts, Waterbury Public Schools, I wanted to say happy Board of Education Month to all of you. I appreciate all that you do so much. We really elevate fine arts in Waterbury this year, and it's really all because of you guys. We appreciate it, the kids appreciate it, the teachers appreciate it. Thank you so much.
My name is Ian Ridley, I'm senior at Woburn High School, and I just want to thank the Board of Education members for everything they do for the community.
Happy Board of Education Month. Thank you for all you do for the staff and students of Waterbury Public Schools. I wanted to show how good the Board of Education appreciates you. I wanted to thank you for all that you do for us, especially for our students. Thank you for your dedication and your support.
Great, from James Elementary, thank you for everything you have done. Happy Board of Education Month. Gracias por todo, gracias por este año.
This is a message to the V O E. I'm not just saying thank you, but that I appreciate those in which I think it's time to volunteer, willing to sit and listen with both bits, while being taken in as a member of the board to speak about us being able to prosper in terms of learning and having a clear vision to lead while having the need of having a voice because you all have to believe in exactly what it is that you want guaranteed. So thank you for your fellow leadership in which you all have the nerve left to succeed.
This is sent to all of our Commissioners in appreciation from our students, from our staff, for all of the work that you do tirelessly as you volunteer and you serve in the Board of Education. So on behalf of all of my staff and all of the students and staff here in Waterbury, my senior cabinet who are also on this meeting, we thank you for your strong support, and we thank you for everything that you do tirelessly on behalf of children. Happy School Boards Appreciation Month.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
I have several things to share with you tonight in celebration, and so I I want to first start off by introducing a very special member of our staff who has joined us at Crosby High School, and he is here this evening. Mr. Mosley has accepted the interim position as the Assistant Principal of Crosby High School, and very importantly to us all is the the leadership role for the Early College High School. In this very short time that he's been with us, he's made a difference for the students at Early College High and as well as the first cohort of students there and in preparation for our second cohort, which will begin in the fall of 2021. And so I've asked Mr. Mosley to be here this evening to personally introduce him to all of you and ask if he has a few words as he has just started his new work. Mr. Mosley.
Thank you, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, esteemed colleagues, families, and friends. I thank you for this opportunity, Dr. Ruffin, and the board, to serve in this capacity. As many of you all know, I'm born and raised in Waterbury, and more importantly, I'm a product of Waterbury Public Schools, and I truly believe in the ability for Waterbury Public Schools to set students up for success and to create leaders for the future. We have an opportunity for our Waterbury Public Schools students and their families for them to have the opportunity to not only earn a high school diploma, but an associate's degree concurrently through our Early College High School program. As Dr. Ruffin has explained, we are currently in the middle of our first cohort of about 20 students. We're looking next year at having another cohort of about 40 students through our partnership with Post University. And we are anxious to welcome our incoming students, and we're also anxious to prepare them for career strands in areas such as marketing, legal studies, accounting, criminal justice, management, and early childhood education. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the numerous mentors that I've had over my professional career as well as my academic career. One of them in particular I want to recognize tonight is Jade Gopi. For the past six or seven years has provided me with guidance and leadership. She's been a tremendous role model as an administrator in this district, and I really look up to her as someone who I've modeled my career after. I also like to thank the Crosby leadership team, Miss Kathy Newmark, Mr. Sal Valero, Miss Melissa Richardson for welcoming me with open arms and supporting me through my transition. I like to thank the Early College High School staff and the Crosby staff for their continued support. I like to thank the families of Crosby High School, but most importantly, I like to thank the students of Crosby High School, and it's been a pleasure and an honor serving them in the capacity of a teacher and department chair for the past six years, and it's an even more joyous capacity to serve as a building administrator at Crosby High School. I also like to specially recognize Dr. Janice Epperson for her continued support in my professional development as well as support of our Early College High School program. And I also like to especially thank Post University in the city of Waterbury for its tremendous foresight in creating such a dynamic program. Our parents and our students are excited about this program. We had an assembly last week where we have boasted even more excitement, and I have tremendous optimism for this program. So again, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Ruffin, thank you to the board, and thank you to the Waterbury community. I also, if I may, like to introduce my wife, Attorney Azza Mosley, at this time.
Good evening.
Hello there.
And so again, we thank you all. We're looking forward to working more closely with the Waterbury Public Schools families and students.
Sean, thank you very much. Glad you're part of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Sean? Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand raised.
Well, I'm not sure it's a question. Attorney Mosley. I'm so proud of you. You know, you were one of the first teachers I met along my path on this Board of Ed. And, you know, I truly believe you and I hit it off real quick. I'm really proud of you, and I'm just, I want everyone to know that. You've done so well. I hope you stick around. I know probably opportunities will come left and right for you, but you are absolutely one of our diamonds, and I appreciate what you bring. You know, you go back even with my son on a charter revision, so I'm really proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mosley? Commissioner Karen Harvey, I see your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Sean Mosley. You know, I'm just so happy for you. Opportunities have come your way already, all right? And I'm so glad that we, you know, this opportunity is there for you. I know you're going to take it and fly with it. I say hello to your wife. Happy to see her again, but if there's anything that I can help you with, any type of support you need, you know how to reach me. So congratulations, Sean.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments? Sean, I just want to tee off my congratulations on how proud I am of you. I've known you many years. I've known your dad a lot longer. You've got a good lineage and a great stock there, so please continue that legacy. You have our support, and just yell if we can help you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're quite welcome. Yay. All right, Dr. Ruffin, we're back to your floor. Doctor, you're muted.
Oh, I bet people would want to do that to me often. Waterbury Public Schools welcomes students back for a full day of instruction. On Monday, we welcomed our students back for a full day, and students learn in person, and will continue to do so following appropriate safety protocols such as hand washing, physical distancing, and wearing masks. We are incredibly proud of our staff and their tremendous efforts in providing a safe and healthy learning environment for our students. And as our central office staff and myself were able to visit the schools on Monday, it was really wonderful to see students, slightly more students coming back in person, and we hope that that will continue to increase, especially as the safety protocols continue to be announced across the state. I think I have to do one more thing to get my slides moving here. Waterbury also marked another Fun Field Read Across American Day, celebrating the joys of reading and encouraging our students to read more. The staff and students dressed up as their favorite characters in person and virtually. Enjoy the following images of some of our students and our staff, and I'm very pleased that I had an opportunity to read virtually to our students. It was really fun for me as well. Gear Up Swag Bag Giveaway. The Gear Up program arranged for each of its eighth grade students to receive a swag bag, which included a drawstring backpack, the novel Ghost Boys, a set of earbuds, a face mask, daily planner, and a college playbook. The pictures here from left to right, Westside Principal Pete McCaslin, eighth grader Irvin Rivera, and House Principal Michael Veronno. Waterbury Public Schools students also win College Board Opportunity Scholarships. We're so proud of them. The students have been awarded College Board Opportunity Scholarships. It's a program dedicated to guiding students through the college planning process. Congratulations to the students from Kennedy High School, Althelia Aduko, and Mensor Abavik. We are also proud of Waterbury Arts Magnet's school student Celine Onur and Waterbury Career Academy Aaron Ozin and Sarah Barazza. Waterbury Career Academy student was awarded $20,000 in scholarship. We congratulate Alan Rydel Morello, who is a senior at WCA. He won the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation Scholarship. It's a $20,000 scholarship over four years. There were 100,000 applicants across the country, and they select winners in different districts. 25 were chosen from Connecticut to interview, and they narrowed it down to three finalists, and our very own student Alan won. Congratulations, Alan. This concludes my announcements so far today, and thank you very much, Commissioners, for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, and my comments are as brief as I can be. I wanted to congratulate all my Commissioners on this Board of Education Appreciation Month, and thank you for being part of this team. Thank you for your commitment. And most of all, thanks for supporting me as I got my teeth wet in this job. I thank you very much. Our next agenda item is our student representatives. Leani Diaz, welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to pass on as a comment?
I just wanted to say that a lot of the people in my school have been adjusting really well to the full day in school. There have been questions regarding if there's going to be any developments in after-school programs, field trips for the near future, graduation, and prom, especially for seniors. Personally, as a junior, I really hope that the seniors get to have their graduation and their prom because they worked really hard for that, and I hope to have that for my senior year next year. So those are just a few of the concerns.
Well, thank you very much for sharing. Student Representative Mateo Masius, I see your picture there. Would you like to pass on any comments to the board?
Yeah, Leani took a lot of mine. No, I'm just kidding. It's fine. Sorry, my camera isn't working. But yeah, I think right now, I can speak for the seniors in saying that the graduation is probably one of the things we're really hoping to get to do this year. You know, we don't care if it has to be like outside or anything. I don't know, it's just something we're all looking forward to, and hopefully we can get to that point. Then I would also just like to say, I've been on Board of Education as student representative for last year and this year, and so this is my last year. And I'd like to say thank you all even for letting me do this.
Well, I think I speak for the board, and we thank you for being part of this, and thank you for your involvement and your commitment to helping it get better. So round of applause. I see everybody giving you an applause.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the Consent Calendar question. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? I don't see anybody waving, so I will go on and delineate that consent calendar. Item 9.1, a request approval of a student-teacher practicum affiliation agreement with Alternate Route to Teacher Certification, or otherwise known as A R C, for Alternate Route to Certification Student Practément Placement Program. Item 9.2, request approval of a professional services agreement with Family and Children's Aid Incorporated to provide consulting services under the School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant. Item number 9.3, request approval of an agreement with Waterford Country School, Inc. to provide special education services to students. Item number 9.4, request approval of a student-intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University for Social Work Student Internships. Items number 9.5 and 9.6 are pretty well close. 9.5 is request approval to apply for the C S D E Career and Technical Education Secondary Special Populations Recruitment and Retention Grant. Item number 9.6, similarly, is request approval to apply for the C S D E Promoting Financial Literacy in the Middle School Statewide Grant for 2021. It's important to note that both projects reflect an intention on the part of the district to sustain both projects after the grant period ends for each of the two C T E grants. Number 9.7, request approval of a construction contract with S K Mechanical LLC for the Walsh Middle School Boiler Replacement Project. Number 9.8, request approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Agreement with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions Incorporated. Number 9.9, request approval of revised policy 4,000.1 Title IX (Staff). Number 9.10, request approval of a new policy 5145.44 Title IX (Students). I would like to get a motion to approve this consent calendar.
I make a motion to approve the cassette calendar, items 9.1 through 9.10.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We move on to the next item. Number 11, Commissioner on Finance, Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. 11.1, request approval of a construction contract with Creative Recreation LLC to provide playscape equipment and installation for Wendell Cross Project.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Orso. Item number 12.
11.2.
You got another one? I'm sorry.
11.2, request approval of contract with Connecticut Communications LLC for voice-over IP equipment and service.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, any discussion, I should say. I'm getting out of whack here. Any discussion, thoughts, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Orso.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item number 12, Commissioner Ann Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Motion to approve final plans form S C G dash 042 for the Generali Roof Project.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ann Sweeney. Commissioner Karen Harvey, the floor is yours for item number 13.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Committee of the Whole. Item 13.1, request approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the School Crossing Guards for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Respectfully submitted, so moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. In our document is the Superintendent's notification to the board.
Motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's notification to the board, items 14.1 through 14.8.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I see Commissioner Van Stone's hand waving. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you. Just want a little clarification. There's two grant-funded appointments. One is for the Yeshiva, and one is for Holy Cross. Just wanted the explanation of what grant that comes from, and of course, because we're sending our people out to other avenues, which I understand happens, just want to understand what grant that was being supported by.
I'm going to ask Ms. Beal if she could speak to that.
Yeah, that would be Title 1, Commissioner.
Okay, and I know we support other schools with our different grants. In this case, I just wasn't sure what. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any other ones. Section 15, any unfinished business of preceding meeting only? I don't recollect, and I don't see anybody's hand, so Commissioner Ann Sweeney.
We need to take a vote on the receiving place of file.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we need to take a vote to place on file. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, and thank you for covering my back, Commissioner Ann Sweeney, old age. The next agenda item is number 15, and that, I believe, was for unfinished business of the preceding meeting only. I don't recollect any, so I don't see anybody's hand countering my recollection, so thank you. Any other, number 16, any other unfinished, new or miscellaneous business? Okey-dokey, we'll move on as no one has got any other things. And Commissioner Sweeney, would you do the honors? We're going into executive session.
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee in regards to Reed Principal.
Second.
Thank you. Any other question? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We are going into executive session.
Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken. Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken. Second.
Discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank, thank you. Anybody want to discuss it or talk about it at length? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone, thank you for being here. Lea, Leanny, thank you for being here. You stuck it out the entire run, so thank you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. What's, what's your cat's name, Will?